Check, check.
But I will tell you something.
Bye.
Miles.
Oh. She asked me 10 minutes ago. Hold on, let me see if it's been posted yet.
To do the registration.
Taking the register?
It should have put the right.
It's not published yet, I don't know. Please be here to join.
What do you click? Open? Nope, open. All right. I do not know, it is not published. I don't have access to that. I do not know.
I'll call Susan.
Okay, call Susan. I gotta call Susan real quick.
Okay.
Anyway, because there's too many things happening.
Two things, they are bothering me for the speaker number 12.
Kathy, we can hear what's happening in there, I don't know if we're supposed to be or not.
We weren't talking at all.
Somebody's talking, because it's, somebody in there is talking. About calling Susan and stuff.
That is, that is such a lie.
It's not, I confused.
GGA and regs and protection.
Nineteen.
Rebecca, is it all set yet, or no?
No. Yeah, it might, one sec. Talk about it then. We'll be, we'll be fine, we'll be fine. All right, thank you. Nine. So tonight, tomorrow? Eighteen.
Rebecca, are you all set?
You're good, they don't.
Okay, great.
Can you hear us now too?
So Tammy, we're gonna talk now to even, to everybody online, too.
I could hear you all, so I was just like, I don't know if I'm supposed to be here.
Talking, that's all. So, exactly. So, good evening, everybody, this is the public hearing for the General Government B and Veterans and Military Affairs Units and Agencies. And we are going to start with numero uno, number one, Walter Glom. Walter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Walter Glom, I am the Executive Director of the Connecticut Council on Developmental Disabilities. As many of you know, we are a federally funded department or of the state of Connecticut. Hence, you can imagine what my inbox looks like these days as we await final guidance from the administration. I am here to speak to the budget for the Attorney General's Office, motivated by what I have been, what I perceive is happening at the federal level. And that is, I am concerned that going forward, we will not be able to rely on the US Attorney to enforce civil rights laws for people with disabilities or other protected classes. And naturally, this is a profound concern. We have in the past utilized the US Attorney for a variety of civil rights enforcements. In the absence of that, I feel that the state of Connecticut needs to be prepared. I am heartened by statements I've heard from the governor and from the Attorney General assuring us that they are going to continue to protect the rights of residents of Connecticut. But in order to do that, they're gonna need resources. You'll, you'll see me again tomorrow, talking about CHRO and the other, the other offices. But in particular, if we're gonna need, if the Attorney General is going to fulfill this role in protecting our population against discrimination and other wrongs, there's gonna need, there's gonna be a staff impact. So I'm here to simply ask you to please do what you can to ensure that the office of the Attorney General of the state of Connecticut has the resources that they need to protect our people. And that's my statement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your, for your testimony.
We really appreciate it. Up next is Shay DeAndres. Is Shay DeAndres here? From the Association of Commuter Rail Employees. Do we have anybody online?
No, we do have two people online, I didn't talk them all, but she's, she's in person.
The next one is online. Sandra. Ferrer Molina.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Floor is yours.
Thank you so much, well, good afternoon. All the chairs and ranking members and the committee members. My name is Sandra Ferreira Molina, and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Director at the Connecticut Oral Health Initiative. I am here today to strongly support proposed bill number 6765, enact concerning dental care services for certain veterans. This bill addresses a critical need in our community, access to affordable dental care for veterans. As we all know, veterans have served our country with honor and sacrifice. Unfortunately, many veterans face significant barriers to accessing quality health care, including dental services. With this bill, we have an opportunity to alleviate one of those barriers by establishing a program in collaboration with the University of Connecticut School of Dental Medicine, which would provide veterans with vouchers to cover out-of-pocket dental costs, which we know are extremely expensive. As it stands, veterans are often left to navigate a complex system when seeking dental care. As for many, the financial burden is simply too much to bear. This bill helps fill that gap by providing tangible, practical support to veterans who are struggling to afford the dental care they need and deserve. By offering vouchers for dental services, we ensure that those who served our country are not left behind when it comes to their health and well-being. The Connecticut Oral Health Initiative fully supports this bill and believes that it represents a crucial step in providing our veterans with the care they deserve. Access to dental care is essential, not only for overall health, but also for quality of life. With the passage of this bill, we can offer veterans an opportunity to maintain their health and dignity, free from the financial stress of dental expenses. Thank you for your time and for your consideration for this very important issue, and I urge you to support House Bill 6765 and provide veterans with the assistance they so rightfully deserve. Thank you.
Very much, Sandra, have a nice night.
You too, thank you.
Up next is Christopher Brecklin. Christopher, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, Senator Summers, Representative Nuccio, and members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Christopher Brecklin, I am the Director of Data and Digital Systems at Compass Youth Collaborative, a nonprofit that interrupts violence in the city of Hartford. We'd like to thank you for your support over the last couple of years. We're here to request core support for our Peace Builders Program, which offers a unique blend of wraparound violence prevention and intervention services. State funding is critical to our youth's success, especially with the end of ARPA and the uncertainty around federal funding. What makes Compass unique is more than just our peace builders, who are credible messengers with lived experience that build transformative relationships with youth traumatized by community violence. We also create and have created an innovative model that combines licensed social workers, education supports, workforce development, intensive case management, and hospital-based crisis services. We also rigorously evaluate our program to ensure that we're serving youth to the highest standards and improving their lives. Our innovative case management platform is designed to make it easy for our entire team, from the front lines to the boardroom, to have real-time data on how the program is doing. Our peace builders are also trained in cognitive behavioral interventions and trauma-informed practices. Compass Peace Builders is a vital component of the community violence intervention ecosystem in Connecticut. Wraparound services like Peace Builders are essential for young people like 16-year-old Kay. After he was shot the second time, he met our Director of Crisis Services and Crisis and Hospital Response Larry at a local hospital. He'd recently moved in with his father for safety reasons, but his injuries prevented him from climbing the stairs while he healed, so he moved in with another family member in a neighboring town. That meant he couldn't get homework from his local school district, and our education team was able to advocate for his educational rights and keep him on track. Kay didn't want to enroll in our program when he first met our team, but he did agree to meet with our licensed social worker to work on his mental health. As his injuries healed, he did enroll, and his peace builder Isaiah started meeting with him regularly, using cognitive behavioral theory to help him understand the connection between his emotions and behavior. He participated in a stipended summer research program, and he's actually on track to graduate high school this year. And he will be eligible for our Training for Employment Program, which is another paid workforce opportunity. You know, after, even after he graduates, he's still going to get support, because Peace Builders is a four-year program, and it doesn't end when they graduate from high school or find themselves a job. Our impact tells its own story, last year, 79% of our youth decreased their level of risky behavior, 73% reduced their engagement in violence, 82% were on track for sustained employment, and 82% increased their pro-social relationships. Our collaboration with the judicial branch has also been key to reducing recidivism among young people. 26% of the juveniles in our program were rearrested compared to 72% statewide. 20% of the young people 18 and over also did recidivate, but that's compared to 59% statewide. We know that funding for CVI programs and hospital-based programs reduces violence. It's no coincidence that Hartford saw a 39% decline in homicides last year. We're asking for the state to partner with Compass in building community where our youth feel safe, live peacefully, and have the opportunity to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, and we don't ask questions, but I just want to compliment Compass on being recognized nationally as one of the best violence-reducing programs that we have in this state. So thank you very much for everything that you're doing, and the data is phenomenal, and it makes people feel comfortable with putting money in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tony's gonna kick me pretty soon if I don't stop talking.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Sally Bell. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Senator, Representative. Okay. Good afternoon, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, and Honorable Members of the Appropriation Committee. My name is Sally Bell. I live in East Hartford, and I work as a Certified Nurse in Assistance at the Department of Veterans Affairs. I come before you today to urge you to increase funding for healthcare service for the veterans. I have worked as a CNA for 24 years at the DVA Hospital in Rocky Hills. I got into this field because I love caring for others. Initially, I wanted to become a nurse, but with young children, it wasn't possible for me to pursue the necessary schooling. Fortunately for me, I find my calling providing care for veterans at the DVA. I love my job, I love being able to provide care for the men and women who come to the DVA for services. We are blessed to be able to hear their stories and build relationship with the people we care for. One man, one veteran is 105 years old and still quite sharp. He will tell you all sorts of story of his time serving his country, but also just about his life. They are, the moments are my coworker and I cherish. Which, that said, we face challenges every day. The veterans we serve are not receiving the quality care they deserve because we are too understaffed to provide, to provide, excuse me. At the hospital, we have four units with 25 patients, each and only 12 CNAs to care for all of these individuals. When there's increments, whether we still drive into work. But if someone can make it, can't make it, that means we are unable, understaffed, and the shift hasn't, hasn't started. We need to be staffing our units in order to be flexible based on the fluctuation needs of this population and to anticipate staffing shortage in advance. To do this, we need more funding, we need to hire more CNAs and nurses. We need to pay these caregivers a competitive wage so that we can attract and retain, retain them. We cannot forget that it is the veterans who suffered when we choose not to fund these services. They are people who gave everything they had for us and for their country. They fought for us, it's time we fight for them. Please increase funding for veterans' healthcare in the DVA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Up next is Barbara Mazzaro.
I thank you honorable co-chairs, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, Senator Marks, Representative Daley, ranking member, Senator Gordon, Representative Frisella, and the entire Appropriations Committee. My name is First Lieutenant Barbara Mazzara, and I serve as the Adjutant for Second Company Governor's Horse Guard in Newtown, Connecticut. We are asked to justify why the militia should be in the Connecticut state budget in regards to House Bill 6440. I'm a veteran and I am also a taxpayer. I understand your concerns. Why allocate funds for the militia? Because our organization is very active for the residents of the state. Why does the state of Connecticut fund historical buildings, monuments, historic parks? They are free to the public, the state doesn't make money from those static investments. Our militia have served the state since 1771 and 1808, but we are not only a living history, but serve a valuable role in the community. Regarding House Bill 6440 and appropriation, I ask you each to verify some facts before making decisions. Representative Mitch Bolinsky and the leaders of the four militia have on several occasions requested the 2GHG operational costs. General Hedenberg himself and staff said they would provide them to us, as well as the town of Newtown, but have not. He told me that the cost of electricity for 2GHG was $25,000, and that it costs $6,000 per year for water. But the state electrician and an Eversource representative said there was no electric meter on our property. The leaders of the militia were told by the generals that the four units took up 1/10th of the $6 million state military budget. Yet, at our last hearing, military staff quoted we took up 1/6th of this budget. I find it alarming as a taxpayer that there is no concrete data being presented, and questionable numbers are guiding major decisions. In addition, in 2024, over $15,000 from numerous fundraising and honorarium checks is unaccounted for. The money was to be deposited into an account which, under written law, is to go to the operations of the Horse Guard. The last known balance in June was over $50,000. When receiving donations, we make it very clear that we, the money is going to the Horse Guard and not the military. As proposed House Bill 6440 is written, the military will claim this money. I would be outraged if I were donating money to an organization, and the money was placed in someone else's hands, and the organization received none of it. We need the state's financial help to survive. We are open to other options. We are open to the idea of falling under a different State Department. Our unit has existing bylaws that could be put into place once again. A new department would most likely wish for us to self-govern under their guidance. Should the state of Connecticut provide sustained funding, there is a chance we could manage to save our unit and continue to serve the residents of Connecticut. That is all, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming up, and you said Newtown?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is Jan Lawrence, she's online, she or he is online. There you go, sir.
I am here. Thank you, thank you Senator Austin. Good evening, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, and members of the Appropriations Committee. My name.
You appear to have frozen, sir. Probably.
Services. I'm also owner of CSEA, SEIU Local.
So just Jan, so just so you know, you froze.
Municipal Board of Education.
Jan?
Yes.
You froze, so can you turn off your, your video so that we can hear you?
Yes, is that better?
That's better, can you start at the beginning, please?
I sure can, yeah, sorry, it did freeze for me earlier, too, thank you. I'll begin again, Senator Austin, thank you, and Representative Walker, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Jan Lawrence, I am a resident of Hebron, and I work as an information technology supervisor for the Department of Administration's Bureau of Information Technology Solutions in service to the Department of Developmental Services. I am also a member of CSEA, SEIU Local 2001, a labor union representing 25,000 state municipal Board of Education, active and retired, public and private sector workers, including information technology professionals, scientists, and engineers. I also serve as CSEA's P4 Council President, which represents the same IT professionals, scientists, and engineers in the state's P4 Bargaining Unit. I offer the following testimony on the budget for the Department of Administrative Services, specifically for the Bureau of Information Technology Solutions. A properly funded state budget is necessary to ensure that the services provided by myself and my fellow state employees are delivered effectively and efficiently. When we are given the resources and support we need, state employees do it better, faster, and for less than anyone else. As an IT development supervisor for bits in service to the Department of Developmental Services, my role is to staff the development unit, manage projects, and oversee and direct the developers responsible for building and maintaining high-quality applications for DDS. These applications help DDS staff manage the assignment and monitor the quality of services delivered to the individuals of our state that have intellectual disabilities. Presently, both my unit and bits at large have been impacted by the soft freeze of rehiring and hiring of positions, including in my case, two existing recently vacated positions in service to DDS. At DAS Bits, there are presently approximately 70 staff that still remain at 35 hours a week, as opposed to 40 hours a week. Originally, in our last contract negotiations, DAS Bits had agreed to complete this upgrade for all staff, wanting to go to 40 hours by the end of June 2025. However, we were informed of the budget shortfall from DAS leadership last spring. However, we were informed of the budget shortfall from DAS leadership last spring, and since last December 2023, there have been no additional upgrades completed. It is important that the state fully funds these positions so that DAS Bits can provide the level of support and services needed by the state agencies and the state citizens that we support. And it is critical, both in terms of cost-effectiveness and quality control, for the work done by the state's information technology professionals to remain in-house. Not only can we do it better, faster, and for less than any outside, usually out-of-state, for-profit contractor, our first commitment is and always will be to the residents of Connecticut. I am proud to work for the people of Connecticut and ask you to craft a budget that makes needed investments in public services, the people who provide them, as well as the people who rely on them. Ensuring proper funding for our IT professionals not only will benefit the staff we support, but will have benefits for our government, workforce, and the residents of Connecticut. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night. Drive careful.
Thank you.
Up next is James Forellis. James? The floor is yours.
Good evening. And thank you, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, and members of the Appropriations Committee, for providing me the opportunity to offer testimony concerning the need to increase funding to private providers like Conteam of Care. My name is Jim Forellis. I'm President and CEO of Conteam of Care. We've been in operation for over 60 years. While we're headquartered in New Haven, we operate 60 programs throughout the state, including group homes, supportive housing, crisis stabilization, case management, outpatient clinical services to more than 2,500 individuals who are struggling with mental illness, developmental disabilities, and substance use disorders. We also provide emergency response services for mental health emergencies, providing both a mobile crisis team and a crisis-receiving center for adults. We also provide residential treatment programs for veterans and an emergency shelter for 100 unhoused individuals at a time. At least 75% of the individuals that we serve have a history of being homeless, are homeless, or have been previously hospitalized long-term in a state institution. Unfortunately, the governor's proposal for private providers fall significantly short of what is needed to keep up with rising costs, not to mention the need to adequately compensate staff. Like all businesses, we have experienced increases in the cost of essential operating expenses, such as utilities, food, housing, premiums for medical, property and liability insurance, leasing costs, as well as transportation. These costs have all risen year after year, anywhere from 6% to 13%, with higher insurance costs to come. Given the rising costs continue to outpace revenue, we've had to make some very difficult decisions, including closing one program and placing two others on a watch list due to financial constraints imposed by this issue. The COLAs provided to nonprofits by the state have not kept pace with the rate of inflation. The state minimum wage has fortunately been adjusted to inflation, increasing by nearly 50% since 2019. However, our state contracts during that same timeframe have increased by less than 15%. In fact, the range between state minimum wage and the starting salaries of many nonprofits has only narrowed, thereby creating a major challenge in recruitment efforts and contributing to staff turnover. Therefore, we have no option with the ARPA funds that we used last year to give a COLA to staff and raise the starting salary. When I have applicants who want to work in human services say to me that I have $50,000 to $100,000 in student loans, I cannot work in residential services, is completely understandable. We also have lost a great deal of staff to other industries, like Amazon, where our starting pay is $25 per hour, and they don't have to deal with the types of challenging behaviors that many of our homes or programs often present with. One recent example of not being able to recruit is the reduction of services for in-home mental health case management. We did have a capacity of 119, but because of being understaffed for over a year, the contract was understandably adjusted to a capacity of 80 service slots. This reduction was not due to lack of need for the service, but rather to meet the current staffing needs. In conclusion, I urgently call on the committee and the legislature to increase critical funding for private providers by annualizing the ARPA funding and providing, at the very least, a 3% annual increase in the next BIM budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for testifying. Appreciate it. Up next is Paul Mazzara. Paul? Somehow related to Barbara?
Yes, ma'am, that's my better half over there. Thank you to the honorable co-chairs, as well as the entire Appropriations Committee. My name is Captain Paul Mazzara, and I'm the Executive Officer of the Second Company Governor's Horse Guard in Newtown, where I've served in that organization for 35 years. I'm also a combat veteran, where I served in both wars, in Iraq and Afghanistan, as a soldier in Charlie Company, 102nd Infantry Regiment of this Connecticut Army National Guard, where I served under the command of current Brigadier General, correction, Major General Fran Yvonne. I'm submitting this testimony in response to HB 6440, an act concerning the organized militia and the governor's guards and its impact on the future of the militia and the Second Company Governor's Horse Guard. If this passes and it is enacted as written, Connecticut's organized state militia would be removed from the command and control of the Connecticut Military Department. Furthermore, in order to continue to operate, it must do as a private entity. As a private entity, the second horse and the militia would be solely responsible for financially, legally, and administratively supporting ourselves. In short, maintaining the militia and the horse guard, its horses and revolutionary history would be financially an impossibility. Another result of privatization of the horse guard would be detrimental impact to many communities that we serve. As a private entity, being forced to sustain financially, we would become a pay-for-service organization. And our underserved communities, which we served, will lose most negatively, I'm sorry, will be those most negatively impacted. The organization would have to charge communities a large amount of money for experiences to cover the costs associated with performing. We have been, correction, we have never been and ought not be, a unit that can only be enjoyed by the elite. It has been suggested that the property of the Governor's Horse Guard currently sits in Newtown should be conveyed to the nonprofit organization, the Friends of the Second Company Governor's Horse Guard. To this date, there has been no desire expressed on the part of that organization to receive such property. And anybody receiving such conveyance, even for nominal consideration, will be responsible for the costs of the maintenance of the facility, hiring, and the cost of an employee to care for our horses. To date, the Second Company Governor's Horse Guard has never attained the level of fundraising to bear such costs. And moreover, there is no feasible forecast for such income that would be required. It is estimated that the private organization will be required to fundraise an estimate $300,000 yearly to sustain our operations. Raising such money by a volunteer force would be nearly impossible. I fear if that was the case, our unit would be relegated to history and to history books. Some question the necessity to continue the historic operation of Connecticut's militia. Connecticut has many historical places it maintains for the preservation, education, and experience and exposure to Connecticut's history. Connecticut prides itself on its rich revolutionary history. It has a reputation of being the Constitution state. Why should our militia be any different? Connecticut's organized state militia and its horse guard and its horses are intrinsically woven into the tapestry of that history. It is dishonest to say that they can be dissected from the narrative without affecting the character of our state's history. The present-day existence, the continuation of the militia and the horse guard, tie that past to the present, providing a true history of our state and complete narrative of our nation's history. I respectfully request the committee to take these points into consideration regarding HB 6440. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you have given to our country. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
We do have Shay DeAndres. Shay DeAndres here. They are the only one that has not testified, that has signed up to speak. Is there anybody here by that name? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:31, and we are set for the night, unless any of you.